Okay, I will call this portion of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. This is the public hearing and resolution portion of tonight's meeting. To begin with, we're going to start off with a resolution honoring Keaton Cook, a Clinton High School senior. Chairman Mays will be presenting tonight's resolution.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. It's very rare that you are in company with someone who is the only person that's ever done something. Usually, if you think you're that person, there's usually two or three that went down that path. But the cool thing is, is tonight, Keaton Cook, who is a high school senior at Clinton, is the only one in Anderson County Schools history to accomplish this. So at this time, before I read it, I'd like for Keaton and his family to come on up. And parents, you can get the best angle for pictures or a photograph of him. You can come right here, Keaton. So I'm going to go ahead and read this. It is a resolution number 25-04-1212. It's honoring Clinton High School senior Keaton Cook, Anderson County's first-ever Haslam Scholar at the University of Tennessee. Whereas, Keaton Cook, a distinguished senior at Clinton High School, has achieved the extraordinary honor of being accepted in the prestigious Haslam Scholar Program at the University of Tennessee. And whereas, the Haslam Scholars Program was established in 2008 and is a designation awarded to less than 1% of students at the University of Tennessee, and if I may add, I think only 15, right? In this upcoming class at the University of Tennessee that was honored this. And whereas, Keaton is the first student in Anderson County Schools history to achieve this amazing recognition. And whereas, Keaton's selection as a Haslam Scholar is a testament to his academic excellence, unwavering dedication, and outstanding leadership, as evidenced by his 4.0 GPA and a remarkable ACT score of 34. And whereas, soon to be a double major in finance and accounting, Keaton was awarded the Career in Technical Education Business Student of the Year. And whereas, Keaton earned a bid to the DECA National Conference in Orlando, Florida, where he will proudly represent Clinton High School on a national stage. And whereas, Keaton is an AP Scholar and participated in American Legion Boy State, reflecting his academic drive and dedication to civic engagement. And whereas, in addition to his academic success, Keaton serves in leadership roles such as President of the National Honor Society, President of the Student Government Association, and President of the DECA Chapter, consistently demonstrating an unwavering commitment to his school and fellow students. And whereas, Keaton's leadership extends beyond the walls of Clinton High School, serving with distinction as the student representative on the Anderson County School Board and as a chairman of the Historic Downtown Clinton Student Board. If you read your school board minutes that were sent to us today, you will actually see Keaton with a report in there. And whereas, Keaton has left an indelible mark on Clinton High School and his community through his exemplary service and leadership, a shining example of strong character, compassion, and integrity, Keaton was selected by his peers with a top superlative, Mr. CHS. And whereas, Keaton Cook's achievement bring honor to Clinton High School, Anderson County Schools, and the state of Tennessee, serving as an inspiration for students across our community. And now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 21st day of April, 2025, hereby honors and congratulates Keaton Cook for becoming Anderson County Schools' first-ever Haslam Scholar. Be it further resolved that we proclaim April 30th, 2025, as Keaton Cook Day in Anderson County, in honor of his tremendous academic success and strong leadership within the halls of Clinton High School and his community. Duly passed, resolved, and effective this 21st day of April, 2025. Congratulations. Yeah. Keaton, the mic's yours if you want to say anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This year has definitely been really eventful. I remember walking into it back in July, and all the stuff he listed off was kind of freaking me out. I was like, how am I going to do all this? But I have a great family. I have great parents who go with me everywhere, and they go to tennis matches. My mom is serving as acting advisor for our DECA trip. My dad, he brings me stuff. I forget things a lot, and I'm always calling him, being like, hey dad, I need some help. And he's always got me. And I've got a great church family, and I serve a great Lord who just blesses me every day to be able to do these things. So thank you guys so much.
Madam Chair, thank you. I think Commissioner Foster and I, if we added our ACT school, we may have gotten close. If we combined the two of them, we got close.
Thank you, Chairman Mays, and congratulations, Keaton. We're very proud of you. Anderson County is very proud of you. You're going to do great things. Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing. It is going to be the rezoning of a property at the corner of Lake City Highway and Jefferson Lane, Clinton. And this one is rezoning from C1 General Commercial back to residential, R1 Suburban Residential. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of that? Okay. If you want to come up and just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Tammy Ray. I live at 919 Eagle Bend Road here in Clinton. And I inherited the property when my father passed away, and so I just want to get approval to put a home on the property rather than it be commercial.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak against the rezoning? If you'd like to come up and just give us your name and address, please.
Michael Wagner, Jefferson Lane. I'm not against, but I have some questions. There is an active sinkhole on the property, corner of Jefferson Lane and 25W, 10 feet from the only power, the only power line going into the subdivision. If any changes to the underground water in this corner, this is where it all gathers, that's going to take out that pole. There's a possibility, if it changes direction, it will take out Jefferson Lane and possible 25W. I have a question, has anybody looked at that? Has it been addressed at any meetings? That's my question.
Marjorie, did you want to address that?
We do have a plat that is looking at being approved for that rezoning. If y'all want to look at it, I'll start here and send it over.
We can do that.
But it shows no sinkholes in that subdivision plat.
Do you want to come back?
If you drive by Jefferson Lane, through the subdivision, look on your right, you'll see rocks this big around that the county's put in a hole three times the last two years.
Right. I'm just, given the facts that that is not on the plat that I have, I'm not a surveyor, and I don't do erosion as far as that.
My question is, with heavy equipment in there, you've got compression, compaction, you're going to have vibrations of the ground, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My question is, will that possibly affect the flow of the water underground? That's my concern. It's hydro physics. That's my, that's my question.
I don't have an answer for you because I'm not an engineer.
I understand.
So.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on it? Sir, if you would come up and just give us your name and address.
Randy Gibson. I live at 400 Jefferson Lane. Next August will be 39 years lived there, so I'm familiar with the area. First off, it's a field right now, and I really enjoy seeing the field and watching them cut hay twice a year. And it, but on the other hand, it's not my business what goes on that property. As I understand it now, it's zoned commercial, and you're wanting to change it to residential, I don't know R1 from BR549, whatever R1 is. But I would rather see houses built there than a get-and-go or a Family Dollar, Dollar General up there that started my subdivision. I think that would bring the subdivision prices down or values down. I would ask that if it is rezoned, that it has the same restrictions as the rest of the houses in the subdivision, which is, if I recall, 1,400 square foot. It's got easement on how far back from a property line a structure can be, no livestock. There's nothing really major bad in there that would hurt anyone, I don't think. It's just to protect the rest of the value of the subdivision. I think it also states no mobile homes are in there. I'd just like, if it is rezoned, I'd like to have those restrictions applied to that property. Thank you.
Marjorie.
As far as that, those are deed restrictions, and we cannot enforce those.
And my understanding is that this property is not part of the subdivision?
No.
Okay.
I don't know how you can enforce or enforce without having a building.
Setbacks are enforced. We can enforce those, but deed restrictions, we cannot. Homeowners Association can. We cannot. That is not our purview.
By the way, I have a degree in civil engineering, and like Mike mentioned about vibration and underground flow, the answer is, nobody knows what's underground. If they're backing driving across it with claps, a cave, or anything, nobody knows unless you're a Star Trek and have a, something that you can beam down to the ground and wreck it, you just don't know.
Thank you, sir. Sir, if you'd like to come up, just give us your name and your address.
Yes, my name's James Henderson. I moved into Spring Hill subdivision June of 1984, be 41 years this coming June. And I have no objection to Tammy. I know their family. I knew Roger, practically everyone in that subdivision. My only request from the board, take it as may be, I have a copy of the restrictions in Spring Hill Acres here, some 41 years ago when I bought our property, and at that time, they were running an auction between Barr Stevenson and Hack Ayers out of the Folks. Under section 025020, I got this from you the other day. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, if there's going to be other meetings addressing these subjects under 121A, but I would only ask to respect the, to insert something in this. If you're, if you're going to let it go residential, I'm all for it, as long as it doesn't degrade the property value of anyone that's been in Spring Hill. Some you'll find under their mobile home parks, multiple family dwellings, things of that, that would possibly degrade the value of our property in there. I think that's the only I would ask for you all, and I would respect you all and your properties if you were in the same situation. Other than that, I don't want to put any restraint on Tammy or anything like that. But I think y'all know where I'm coming from on that, and if you would like a copy of this name, I'd be glad to bring it to any one of you. Or if it's already going to be on record, I don't know the process, I'm just giving y'all my concerns here.
I don't think there's a need to see that because, again, those are deed restrictions, and those are things that we, we can't, this board can't enforce.
Okay. So it's not part of the subdivision? This only applies to the, from the subdivision going in right there, is that correct?
It's a deed restriction. It's nothing that any of us can enforce because it's not in the zoning ordinance. It's a deed restriction that has to be enforced by the homeowners association. But that section up front, if I'm not mistaken, is not a part of that subdivision.
Right. At the time, it was classified as what they call a baby farm when Roger bought it. And like I said, I'm not coming here in opposition to Tammy, I want to do the best you can do. But with regard to devaluing our property, I would only hope, and I'm sorry, to put anything other than stick-built structures in there because, as y'all, y'all know where I'm coming from. When you're going to move and stuff in, what that degrades the value of your property, I would only hope y'all consider that. Thank you, Shelley Tyler, for your time.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions for me? I'll do the best I can to.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have any comments on this? Commissioner Bow.
My question is to the zoning office, and I think I know the answer, but just for the record, if there were water runoff problems caused by this work, that would not be something that the zoning office would know at this point?
At this point, no.
It would be one of those situations where you find out after the fact.
There is, basically, they have to make the erosion and the grade proper to make it erode properly. So it will be enforced, the stormwater.
After the fact?
After the fact, yes, sir.
Right. Okay. And whether it's rezoned residential or commercial, any work done to that land would cause most likely the same problem?
Yes, sir.
Good. And as far as deed restrictions, we've been around this mulberry bush before in the past with several zoning requests where that is more of the homeowners association one exists, that's not anything the county enforces.
Correct.
Correct. All right. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Commissioner Anderson, did you have a question earlier? Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on this? Sir, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Brian Farrow. My property is 157 Binkley Acres Lane. My farm is on the opposite side of the creek from the adjoining property. Got in the medium, and again, have, or have no, no concerns as far as that goes, that the main safety and health concern that I see is the amount of flooding that goes on on that property. I do have, I've been there for about 20 years, but I've got five years of records showing that going underwater significantly. Water's made it all the way to the back door of the church, this directly to the side of his, but to my knowledge, it's never made it into the building. But any elevation changes that happens to this property is very likely going to put that church underwater. I did not get pictures of this one, but a bridge went underwater, and that was the one that put water right up towards the back door of the church. But the flood plain and then sewer conditions subject for, is the, the safety concern that I would have and would want to see addressed if this gets to go, go through. So the flooding sewer is, is the safety side of it that I would be most concerned about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Anyone else on this rezoning? Sir, if you'd like to come up and?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. You're fine? Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
Are you referring to the property on Oliver Springs Highway?
Yes.
Okay. That's, we're on.
Okay.
We're on another property right now.
Okay.
We'll get back to that one.
Yeah. Sorry, we were all a little confused there. Okay? So with that, we will move on to the rezoning of the property at 2073 Oliver Springs Highway, rezoning that from R1 Suburban Residential to C1 General Commercial District. So we've heard about the flooding, okay? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of that? Just give us your name and your address, please.
It's my property along with my sister's. It's already zoned residential property. As far as his flood concerns and everything, there're homes on his street that goes behind it that sits down lower. There's homes across the highway that sits down lower. Since I was born in 1988, I've seen it flood maybe one time. So it is already zoned residential. I could have gone in and put homes up or whatever without coming to get it rezoned, so that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this property?
If you'd like to come up and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Vicki White, 212 Binkley Acres Lane. Been there a long time, many years, and the concerns I have is that property's really low, and it floods. And so any movement of that would cause flooding even worse than, you know, because it is a flood zone, it is labeled a flood area. But not only that concern, it's like when they're talking about putting possibly a campground in that area, then you've got all those people moving in and out, all the noise, all the stuff going on all night long. It devalues your property. There was also those trucking places that just built across the street. It's just a two-lane road, it's a lot of traffic, you know, and it just, to me, it would be very hazardous, and you've got school buses coming down through there, and, you know, then they had that farmer's market there on the corner, and I just would not like to see no campground go in there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Yes. Yes. You know right where it is, right?
Yes.
Okay, that creek floods, you know, like when it rains a lot, it really floods there bad. Yeah. So any movement of that dirt or moving around, then, then it'll really be bad.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCamey.
Marjorie, is that considered a flood zone?
It wasn't listed as a flood zone in the maps, but that's what I'm looking for. I'm trying to find the map for it, but it wasn't listed as, as a flood zone. It may be.
It's, it's not listed in the floods, as a flood zone in my deed. There is maybe like 50 feet off the creek that says that I can't do anything with, but other than that, everything's clear to be built on.
So, Mark, is it is or is it isn't?
We're looking.
Sir, if you'd like to come up while they're looking and just give us your name and address, please.
Name and address.
I'm Charles Courier. I live at 208 Sweet Lane in Sweet Estates, and I don't have anything to do with flooding or building of it all, but we've got that lumberyard there now, these big trucks running up and down the highway. We've got the school with school buses running back and forth, morning and afternoon. You've got the two big, huge commercial trucking companies just down the road, just below that, that's running constantly up and down all hours of the day and night. And you've got the fruit market there, traffic, and they've just started running these big U-Haul trucks and everything. And traffic's bad enough in the mornings when you've got plants coming in and out of traffic, same way in the afternoon. And on a two-lane road, I can't see where these campers are going to come flying up and down the highway. It's not a safe condition for anybody that lives on Oliver Springs Highway. I know, I'd hate to see it just for the simple reason, it's just way too much traffic. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comment. Commissioner McCamey, we're still waiting on an answer for you. So Commissioner Foster, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll just make a statement from the planning commission side of things. You know, before, even if we rezoned this, everything that before property can be worked on, they had to submit a site plan, even before he comes forward with a campground or whatever he may choose to do with it, that has to be submitted to site plan. So if there is flooding issues, if there's runoff, that has to be addressed in the site plan that's submitted. So obviously, if we're turning up soil, anytime you had to get permits for that to see what runoff. Same thing with the, the first property that we talked about, if somebody decides to build it, if it was commercial or residential, anytime the property's disturbed, you had to have permits to look at that stuff, to see what drainage is going to be done. So those are things that are addressed through the permitting process, not, not the rezoning process.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster? Come up real quick. Yeah, come up real quick.
Nobody wants a campground next to their house to devalue their property. I mean, that's just the way it is, and all the hazards that goes with that building, fires on it, breathing the smoke going on you. Nobody wants that.
Thank you. Were you able to determine if this was in the flood zone yet or not?
It is not in a flood zone.
It is not?
No.
Okay.
Portions of it are, but not all of it. Most of it's not. Thank you.
With that?
FEMA.
FEMA, okay. With that, we will move to the next public hearing, and that is amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include enforcement procedures. So, Marjorie, would you like to talk about that?
There are enforcement procedures in place right now. What we're doing is we're changing it and giving them more time to be in compliance, and basically so that we can have a set schedule, exacting schedule, that, where we don't have to go back and forth with the owner, hey, I'm in compliance, and then two weeks later, no, they're not in compliance, things like that. So basically, it's just a new enforcement procedure. It's more lenient for the homeowners, but it gives us some more structure.
Do you want to have any questions? If we don't, then I will close this portion of the Board of Commissioners meeting. If we don't, then I will close this portion of the Board of Commissioners meeting, and I will turn it over to Chairman Mays.
You got about 45 seconds? Five minutes? No. She's crazy. I normally succumb to your pressure, Sabrina. We'll start at 6:35. Do not give in to peer pressure, young kids that are out there, because once you turn 40 and you can't turn it back.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We will go ahead and start the regular agenda for the county commission meeting. We have roll call, and we have a quorum. Tonight, we will start out with prayer and the pledge. Prayer will be led by Commissioner Vow, and Sheriff Barker will lead us in the pledge. So go ahead and please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to thank you for salvation, to thank you for all the blessings of life that you give us so freely each and every day, Lord, for protecting us, for watching over our county, for always keeping us on the path that you would have us to go. Please forgive us of our sins, times Lord, that we lean on our own understanding. Be with each of us tonight, Father, as we guide the county. May we have your wisdom in the decisions that we make, not necessarily our own personal views, but what's right in your eyes. All this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
You would enjoy a pledge, salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Vow and Sheriff Barker. All right, we will move on to the next portion of the agenda. This is Appearance of Citizens. This is for any individual who would like to address the county commission on items that are on and not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to address the body. Commissioner Foster will take the time and then give you a warning at 30 seconds. We do have a hard cutoff at three minutes. We ask if you do come and address the commission, that you give us your name and your address, and please keep comments civil, no foul, I don't see this being an issue, but no foul language, no derogatory comments or anything like that. So at this time, I will open the floor up to anyone who would like to address the commission. Mr. Mullins, you're, oh, yeah, go ahead. We had already talked, sorry. Nathan, we'll get you next.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Donna Heitmanek. Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor Frank. I live at 185 Harvard Drive, which is District 2. I used to be teacher, so I'm going to ask by a show of hands, how many of you commissioners have been to the animal shelter in the last six months? Okay, thank you. So for the past 18 months, I volunteered at the animal shelter when my schedule allowed. There are some concerns that I and others have, and many of which have been exposed previously. I'm here tonight to reiterate those concerns and hope that you, the commissioners, and the mayor will take action with swift and actionable solutions. At any given time, there's no reliable way to know what animals are available at the shelter or in foster care. As of yesterday, the current website has only three pictures of dogs under the search "our pets" tab with no information included. The Facebook page is no better. The listing of animals is non-existent, and so is their descriptions. There appears to be no real-time database, no public intake list, and often no response to phone calls, which often, if not always, go to voicemail. Since there's no outside committee where concerns can be taken, solutions explored, or strategies for improvement developed other than the director or mayor, what resource do citizens like myself have? A month ago, a vote was taken to hold a workshop for commissioners to discuss the current shelter's issues. What will be discussed, and how long will it take for that action to be taken? While the county may talk of a new building, it does nothing to address the current dysfunction. What guidelines, regulations, and systems, and structures, and operational procedures does the shelter operate under, and are those documents available to the public? I would like to see them. Finally, I can only speak to what I have seen. The staff appears to be genuinely concerned about the animals. However, they are young and inexperienced. There is often no supervisor on site. From my understanding, dog walking is not part of the workers' duties. Unless a volunteer is there, most of the animals are caged in a small cement kennel, often with wet and soiled floors, with no bedding for up to 24 to 48 hours, at any given time unless someone walks them. The cats never leave their cages. As complex as the issues may sound, solutions are easily available if you, the decision-makers, make this a priority. A review, a review and discussion of current systems, I would suggest doing a time study for each of the employees to determine what the duties are and how exactly how fulfilling their job duties are. My purpose tonight is not to demean or be adversarial. I would like to hold up and find out what the concerns are brought forth, be addressed and corrected as needed in a timely manner. I ask the mayor and commissioners to be open record checking and accountability for the animals and citizens of this county. Thank you.
Mr. Mullins?
I'm Nathan Mullins from Oak Ridge, and I'm here to proclaim a win for grassroots activists like myself. With the help of Moral Majority groups like Moms, NOCS, or Ron for Liberty, we persevered in currying influence amongst Christian representatives like John Reagan and Bible-belt politicians in our Nashville capital. We advocated for conservative pushback even before Donald Trump's executive orders maximized our achieving implementation of the Age Appropriate Materials Act. Even the liberal enclave of Oak Ridge Schools has just preemptively removed 320 books to protect the civil rights of parents from obscenity being offered to their kids, even though Anderson County Public Libraries have fought to disseminate and protect these same books from complete removal for two years. It's ironic that it took COVID school closings four years ago to get the attention of parents in our small-town libraries. Parents were on lockdown with their kids on family outings, but were ambushed, confused that their six-year-olds were bringing gay sex books to them from children's shelves, such as the one 100 yards from here. These good folks then appealed to deep conservatives like myself, as these moms had a legitimate bee in their bonnet. It is unfortunate that the only legal action taken was not to protect kids, but to protect this courthouse from liability, until we forced the issue. Now, however, there are repercussions. We, in the Moral Majority, are proud to announce Trump tariffs on the federal funding of public libraries. Therefore, in order to forestall Marxist divisional politics inflaming perceived grievances in pseudo-oppressed classes, a defunding of federal support for the ALA will be enacted. We will push back against the CEO of the ALA, Emily Drobinski. She has been using her sexual orientation as a cover to infiltrate her avowed communist politics of division into children's curriculum for years now. So if you want to make a difference, get on the Trump train. Local Moms for Liberty and myself are checking tickets. We're stopping in every town to help these individual fighters to ensure our God-given rights are observed and not mocked by leftists, and we are inviting all Moms for Liberty and dads like myself to join our new Anderson County chapter. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the county commission? All right, seeing none, we will move on to, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner Wondell, sorry, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but I didn't really want to wait to the end of the meeting, if you don't mind. I'd like to recognize a family in our district, Bobby Leach, who passed away. He's having his services tonight, so couldn't be there, but he's been a long time. Business owner in our district, as you know, Mr. Chairman, I just want to have everybody put your thoughts and prayers out for them and their family, and I appreciate the time.
Yes, sir. All right. We'll move on to the approval and correction of our agendas. First, we'll start with the consent agenda. Does anybody have, we have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Wondell?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request to move the Veterans Committee Minutes over, and you can put it wherever you like, sir.
All right, we will move that to, you can, if you want, Commissioner, right after your Fire Commission report?
Yes, sir. And speaking of the Fire Commission report, it looks like we got the March minutes in there, so we don't have the April minutes. If you want to do anything with it, I can speak on it, but we don't have the minutes before us.
Annette, do you have those minutes?
Okay.
It's my mistake, I didn't catch it earlier.
Well, we can, you can.
Just talk.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll move Veteran Services to number four under Committee Reports. Is there, on the consent agenda, is there anything else? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the regular agenda with the addition of number four under Committee Reports. Is there any, Commissioner Isbell, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If possible, I'd like to add, under Old Business, is extended truck traffic on 116, please.
All right. Commissioner, do you care if, not for Commissioner Yeager hits me over the head about the definition of unfinished, can we just do it in your operations report?
That's fine.
At the very end, if you want.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So right now, the only addition we have so far is adding number four under the Committee Reports, the Veteran Services Committee. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, if you could appropriate time to add under New Business, appointment of a commissioner to the Rules Committee.
Could.
Okay. I'd like to do that.
All right, so we'll add Rules Committee under New Business. All right, so we'll add Rules Committee under New Business. All right. Are there any other... Any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will now move to the public hearing report. Vice Chairwoman Veneriff.
Thank you, Chairman. So tonight, we did have a public hearing for a couple of items. The first item was the rezoning of the property at the corner of Lake City Highway and Jefferson Lane. We were rezoning that from C1 General Commercial District to R1 Suburban Residential District.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Foster to approve the rezoning. Seconded by Commissioner Palmer. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no, the ayes have it. All right.
The second item we had is a rezoning of a property at 2073 Oliver Springs Highway, rezoning that from R1 Suburban Residential to C1 General Commercial District.
All right, so we've got a motion by Commissioner Foster for approval, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to caution the commission to approving this. I think the... That creek that runs behind this is very fragile. I think the creek is very fragile. I think moving the dirt would be detrimental to the houses that's back on the Brinkley Lane and the traffic on Highway 61. We've got two trucking companies. We've got a sawmill. We've got a lot of, we've got commercial, we've got a school, we've got the convenience center. I think this would add more traffic. It's a two-lane road. I would like to encourage the commission to deny this request.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, I do have a quick question for you, if I may. On this, a request like this, we're not necessarily voting on what the property could be. We're just simply voting on whether or not it meets the criteria to go from this zoning to this zoning.
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Foster, you're recognized.
When this presented to the Planning Commission, it is, you know, rezoning from residential to commercial. We look at, does it meet that criteria? There's a commercial, you know, commercial piece right beside it that's already zoned commercial. There's a commercial across the street. So we look at, does it fit into what allowable? And then, once I said, once they go to putting something around there, it's based on what's allowable in C1, R1. And so that's all submitted back through a site plan. But, yeah, what we do look at from the Planning Commission's side on that first time is, does it meet the criteria to be rezoned to match what other rezoning is there?
Commissioner Val, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering what Commissioner Foster was saying, Director Brooks, this decision in front of County Commission tonight is to rezone or not. We allow the rezoning. Construction begins, plans are submitted to the Planning Commission. If approved by the Planning Commission, does it come back in front of this body? It does not. Therefore, if County Commission wants to object to anything that's done on the property, to Commissioner White's point, now's the time to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir. I would ask too, just real quick, if a certain piece of property checks all the boxes, do we put ourselves in a position when we approve a lot over here, but don't approve one over here? When there's more, if there's citizens that speak against it and we vote against it? Versus if no one shows up and we're still at the same situation, but we're approving it in this community, but not approving it in this community? Do we set, are we, do we put ourselves in a position when we do that?
Are you saying that both properties you might consider check all the boxes?
So whatever the requirements are when they go to the Planning Commission, here are the requirements to be, to go from this zoning to commercial, and all of the criteria is met for just the rezoning?
Just the rezoning.
If we deny that as a body, when we don't know what an actual, there's speculation of what it could be in any situation, do we put ourselves in a position as a county when we start denying things that meet the criteria when we don't even actually know what the plans are?
I'll answer it this way. If both lots checked all the boxes to satisfy the rezon. And it was rezoned, of course, the uses that are permitted change. And you approve one and don't approve another, you could be, there could be some blowback.
All right, thank you.
Did last two or three words out in here?
See, if you have two properties, let's say, or three properties for that matter, and they all meet the criteria, and you approve one but not approve another, or approve two and not approve one, there could be some blowback.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to that just a second?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Am I not correct, Mr. Brooks, that in a BZA, if ever, request meets or checks all the boxes and meets all the requirements, don't we have a right, as a BZA, to deny the request because of safety concerns?
Absolutely. There's criteria in the regs for the Board of Zoning Appeals that, whether it's a special exception or whether it's a variance, there are criteria that you can use to turn it down, yes.
And that's why, that's where I was basing my opinion on this, was there's a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner McCamey, you're recognized, sir.
Planning Commission has recommended this to be approved, right? Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Ma'am, no, we've already had the public hearing on this. I mean, I'll entertain Commissioner to... I can't, I can't hear you. No. I mean, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules, but we've held the line since I've been on commission. All right, seeing none. No other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I think the ayes have it.
All right. I was hoping somebody'd call for a board vote because I knew that was going to sound like. All right, do you have the board set? Remember, yes is approve the rezoning, and no is deny. Ten yes, six no, motion passes. All right. Go ahead.
Okay. The third item that we had on the public hearing, during the public hearing, is an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include enforcement procedures.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that will conclude the public hearing, the report of the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to elected officials. County Mayor Terry Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. I hope everyone had a happy Easter. The first item that I'm requesting action on is I'm requesting a motion to confirm the appointment of Mark Scove to the Anderson County Regional Planning Commission. This will be to fill the unexpired term of Jonathan Two, who moved away. So term expiring January 2027.
Twenty-seven, all right. We have a motion and a second for the appointment of Mark Scove to the Planning Commission. Any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Anderson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to check, is Mr. Scove going to continue on BZA and planning both?
He intends to. We did check, and he can serve on both of those, yes.
Just curious if there's going to be an opening there. Thank you.
Good question. He's a good man. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is, this is an amendment, Amendment Number One to an existing T-DOT contract. This is for grant project SR-61. This is Tri-County Boulevard from Browder Circle to Midway Drive. This now has Law Director approval. I did not have that by agenda deadline, but it has been approved by him. And I'm happy to answer any questions on what this is. We have finished the NEPA or the Environmental Review Process. We have noticed to proceed on design development. And so this particular agreement with T-DOT keeps things moving forward.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Varen, you're recognized.
Yeah, looking at that... One signal for, and two school crossings, correct?
Yes.
Well, what I'm concerned about is that you got, you're going to put in lights at the elementary school, but not the middle school. Is that about correct?
There, I'm not certain exactly where the location will be, so they're getting ready to move into design development. I know that the engineers will be working closely with T-DOT and the school on the location. There was a discussion about having a couple of different areas, and they've done some of the look at the traffic already and where, I mean, I know they have like an idea of where they want them, but currently, there are lights that are just hanging over, that just flash pretty far out. And then the crosswalks are just striped right in front of the school. And so this whole project is really predicated on one child that was hit and on, you know, the child ended up being okay after going to the hospital, a second near miss. And both the middle school and elementary school took this on as a project to try to get this done.
What I'm concerned is, say, the lights put at the south end there, okay? And it changes. So the people at the south end can cross safely. At the north end, you still have traffic coming south until it backs up past that light, you know? Or you may have traffic. I don't know what kind of traffic that would be during school time and everything like that. And if you've got to wait for traffic to come through and then get halfway across, the light could turn green at the south end and let all traffic come back there, and you're kind of stuck in the middle. You know? That's my concern.
Right.
But I certainly agree, this is better than nothing.
Yep.
You know? But I wanted to express my concern on that. And if you talk to T-DOT about it and everything like that, appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely. Be happy to, Commissioner.
All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next I'm requesting a motion to approve, Amendment Number One on Contract 50360. This is evidence-based programming grant for T-DOT inmates in our detention facility. I know Commissioner Val could speak to this very well. This is a contract that is implemented by the Sheriff's Department.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We have a motion and a second for approval of the contract. And the only amendment on this is just the extension of the date, right?
There's a, I think there are a few things in there. Revizes the budget and increases maximum liability, extends the expiration date, and does revise some of the clauses in there.
Gotcha. Commissioner Allen, you're recognized, sir. Did you mean to be? Okay. But we recognized you anyway. Glad you're here tonight. All right, any other discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that one does have Law Director approval as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then, the only other item I have on my agenda is, we did pass a motion requesting the shelter data, and I did put that in, I don't know where it is. So there is data for the animal shelter statistics for the year 2024. And then there is also intake data from January 1st to March 31st, 2025. And the annual data, we had a total intake of 1,019. Our 2024 live outcome rate is 91%. We had 538 adoptions, and 209 of those were at PetSmart. We had died-in-house 15, dead on arrival. Those we do not count in our intake statistics for purposes of live outcome. These are animals that have already passed away or been hit by a vehicle. However, under law, we do have to account for them and proper disposal of those animals. Animals to rescue, 214. Transfer, 67. Euthanasia was 75. So a total of those were 32 cats and 43 dogs. The reasons vary, so it can be for aggression, can be for space, can be for parvo or other issues. The number in foster care at the end of the year were 21 animals. The number at the shelter at year-end were six. And then I also have the data for each of those months in there, and then we'll continue to provide those monthly.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Allen?
Thank you. Madam Mayor. I looked at all the data, and I was wanting to ask you, are any of the data shown out of bounds with the norms of other shelters of this size and service? Are there any outliers that would indicate that something is wrong with the data that you have?
I would, you know, I think, based on our population, so we're, you know, we're handling animals for City of Clinton and the City of Rocky Top. And then the unincorporated county is, you know, a population of about 30,000. I do think our intake numbers are low, and, you know, that is really reflecting of, you know, space considerations. So that's why you'll see a lot of transfers. You see a lot of transfer to rescues. A lot of the community frustration can be, we're not able to immediately take in the animals. We do a lot of negotiating, and sometimes people get upset. We're trying to do what we can to prevent euthanasia, which oftentimes is, can you continue to hold the animal? So I think those numbers are a bit low, the 1,019 compared to some of the other shelters. I want to say...
Does low mean something is wrong?
Well, no, 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 it does not, no. I'm just saying, I think there is a greater need out there for surrender of animals, pickup of animals, you know? I do think there are more animals out there where citizens would like quicker service, if you will, quicker turnaround.
I got one more question, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Ms. Chairman.
The 2024 live outcome data, that's at 92%, is that out of bounds in any way?
I don't believe so. I, I, you know, there is disease out there. You probably saw one of our partner shelters in the county had a December outbreak. Sometimes you have to have euthanasia for these unfortunate events. Sometimes you have aggressive animals. We had a situation even just recently where two animals continued to run at large. They killed a neighbor's pet. Then they ended up chasing people in the neighborhood, trying to attack two girls. And those owners surrendered those animals, and they had to be euthanized for aggression. So, there are times where, you know, maybe we had, you know, we just don't know. I guess, looking at those numbers, I'd have to drill down a little bit more, but I, I think, you know, the team does a good job.
But things look normal, according to this data. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Mayor. We will, lost my place here. Robbie, you're up.
Okay, on the budget committee agenda, the cash and fund balance report, restricted funds are 2.1 million, committed funds, 518,537, assigned funds, 4.1 million, and assigned fund balance, 11,62,435. For a total fund balance of 17,848,531. Cash, 24,704,451 for the general fund. It's up 1.8 million from last year. The schools, total fund balance, 10.5 million, cash, 23.2 million. Any questions on the fund balance report?
Go ahead, Robbie.
All right, sales tax. For the month of February, 3.8 million total for the whole county. The Anderson County portion, 454,113, which is a little, about $9,000 less than last February. On the ARPA projects, still have approximately 10 or so projects that haven't been completed, 207,399 still available in interest.
Commissioner Wondell, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, back to the sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Last couple of months, it looks like it's taken a little dip. It ain't much, but I guess my question is, with these funds, if they, if it starts taking a serious nosedive, how will it impact us?
I mean, it affects our budget. I mean, that's our second largest revenue source is the, is the sales tax, but I don't look, I mean, I don't think it'll nosedive. I can't say for sure, but don't expect it's nosedive like that. It's just kind of leveled off more so than, but we're still ahead of last year's projected numbers will still be more than last year on the fiscal year totals.
But we're below last year's numbers?
No, not right now. We're still ahead.
Okay, thank you.
But we have had a bad last couple of months.
Okay.
You know, lower.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And on the grant inventory list, we did add two new grants from emergency management and EMA and EMS training supplement from the state of Tennessee. Any questions on?
Commissioner Wondell.
Any of those reports?
Yes. I think you'll cover some of this stuff, but the Homeland Security Grant from '23 and '24 for 28,250. I guess my question is, we, the, the grant began in 2023, and then grant end date, 4/30/2025, 28,250. So, I assume those funds came in. It's the, it's the second emergency management.
Okay, I see it.
It looks like it's code 54410-499DHS.
Right.
So, does that mean we've received those funds already?
It, they're, if they're still on here, that we prob, they're, we spend the money first and they reimburse us, is the way, what I'm thinking. And if they're still on here, then they haven't spent the funds, or we haven't received all the funds yet.
So, on this list here, we don't know if the funds have been received or not yet? This is just showing us requested and end date of requests and the total amount requested?
That's correct.
All right.
I can get John to work at, to check on this.
I apologize. Like I said, I didn't get to, to the agenda till late. It was about four o'clock, and I didn't want to bother you before the meeting, but I'll, I'll get with you on some of these. And so, the, the funds, when they do come in, tell me again how they're inserted into the county finance system. Where do they go?
We increase revenue, the revenue code for the Homeland Security Grant, and we increase the expenditure code or codes, however they are allowed to spend the funds. And once they are spent, they ask for reimbursement, and then that's when the funds come in. But they can, we, we do all, we treat all grants like that, not just the Homeland Security, but all grants have a revenue code and expenditure codes. Do a budget amendment through the county.
So, I'll, I'll just, Mr. Chairman, I'll get with Nathan. I, I just wanted to know, like, how are those funds used? What was the purpose of those funds? You know, I'm not doubting they were not used properly, or if they haven't been issued yet, I guess they haven't used them. I, I don't know.
I know they've spent some this year, yes. We may not have gotten reimbursed for them yet, and we may have.
So, we spend funds before we get the grant?
Yes. No, we have the grant. The grant's approved if it's on this list.
Okay.
Then they bring a budget amendment to the Budget Committee, and Commission approves as well, and then they spend the grant funds as.
So, the 2.9, 2,942,940 will be talked about later, I guess, in one of the areas, I think, at the end of the budget on yours.
Yes.
You'll talk about that later?
Yes. We'll have, we have a budget amendment for that, I believe, this week for matching funds.
And I guess that water infrastructure grant is my, I'll, I'll wrap it up, Mr. Chairman, but the 3,795,149 with a matching grant from the county of 379,515. Were those funds received?
Those, if I'm correct, Mayor, those were the, were used from the ARP funds for the TDEC and the ACWA.
Yes, that's ACWA on the water tanks and all of those projects that were part of the TDEC ARP funds. The Homeland Security, and I don't know which one you're looking at, most of the Homeland Security Grants are for EMA, and they are statewide funds that are then divided across multiple counties. And so, you're limited on, you basically ask for, a request for the grant of the allocation that you're capped at. You don't just get to ask for any amount. And then, when they are expended, that has to come to commission because it has to be put into a budget code in order to spend that.
I guess my question is this, if a department asks for a budget of X, say, $5 million, and then they get $4 million in grants, how, how does that work? I mean, I heard what you said, you put it in as a, as a revenue code, but then you back it back out, you say?
We, you increase revenue code, and you, you increase revenue and you increase expenditure codes in their budget. But there's like a, there's a whole grant policy with procedural steps. The first step is like, tonight, we have 10 new grant, where they have to do an application that has to be approved by the Budget Committee. Typically, it's a contract that is approved by the Budget Committee and Commission, then a budget amendment approved. I mean, we, the process probably gets four or five approvals for they ever spend any money.
So, down at the bottom, current year grants, 11,279,370. Those are just requested grants in total?
Yes, sir. There was a grants that have been approved.
They've been approved. And then the 14,435,940, what's that one?
Well, the first one you mentioned, the 11 million, was federal through state. The second one, the 14 million, is state revenue from grants. And then there's federal direct, which is 1.8 million for a total grant of 27,575,310.
And I, I'd like to, and not tonight, but I'd like to know more about these grants, when we get them, when they're implemented into the budget for those particular items, and I'd like to see how that's done in, in that department code. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right. Ready for some action items?
Sure. Okay. Under Group Three purchasing contracts, there are 13 contracts that have legal, that have legal review, 3A through, 3A through 4A and 4C all have legal review.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is this as a group? Commissioner Smallridge? Okay. Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, the Brownfield Study, where, where's that going to be done at? I apologize, I didn't get to that far in it.
That one was actually already approved. Is that the one, Robbie, that's 100,000 or 99,000?
Yes, ma'am, 99,390.
That is for, there is a project in Oak Ridge, just a really fantastic project in the Scarborough community. And part of helping them accomplish the environmental review was application for that particular grant. The way that grant works, the cities cannot be the applicant, it has to be the county. And so, we did assist with the City of Oak Ridge, and we were the applicant, and so that will flow through us.
I remember you saying it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve as a group. Any other discussion? Seeing none, go to the board to vote, please. Motion passes.
Okay, and I do have one contract, Studio Four, for EMS location designs, that is still pending legal review.
Is that still pending review today?
Studio Four. It's 4B, yes. Yeah, I didn't see it on, I didn't see it on the list with the Law Director either.
Commissioner Yeager, you have a motion, and you lowered your microphone.
To refer or defer to next month before we get an approval for, for this item.
All right, so we have a deferral motion for 30, are, are you wanting it to defer to next commission meeting?
Yes.
Or to committee?
Commission meeting.
All right. So, we have a 30-day deferral motion for next commission meeting. All in favor of the deferral? You got one.
Okay.
Commissioner McCamey, is that your second?
Thank you.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The bid protests of UTZI was deferred to the April 24th Budget Committee Meeting, which is this Thursday at four o'clock, and the first item on the agenda. And last, the capital asset donation, there were five vehicles and one ambulance that we needed a motion to surplus.
All right, we have a motion and a second to surplus this property or vehicles. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Group Three transfers, there were 15 of those transfers. They do not require Commission approval. And Commissioner Yeager.
Commissioner Yeager.
All right, I know this doesn't need approval, but I, I'd like to speak on Item 10. It is a transfer in, within the election commission. Legal notices has been used as a, as a feeder for some, for another code in the last, I don't know, two or three months. I think it's totaled like 6,000 or so in the last couple of months. Can you tell me what has been budgeted and what has been actually used?
Budget was $13,000, and he has spent $3,179 on legal notices. And this, with this amended, with this amendment, he has amended 84,100, 8410, sorry, $8,410 from that code to other codes in his budget.
Okay, I just wanted to bring this to attention of any budget members who may want to take a closer look at that budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right.
All right. Group Four appropriations from the School Department, there are two of those from Physical Services for 311,792 and $2 million.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll, go to the board, actually. Sorry about that. Motion carries.
Thank you. Group Five transfers from the School Department, there is one of those from federal programs. It's payroll for $4,725.
Got a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion on this motion here? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. Group Six appropriations non-school, there are 18 of those, 19 through 36. Be happy to take us a group, answer any questions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. Group Seven, there isn't, there was no Group Seven appropriations. Group Eight transfers, there were three of those, one from the Sheriff's Department, one from Turrison, and one from the Library Fund.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. 15 yes, one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, grant, contract pre-applications, there are nine of those, which I put 10 on the sections, but there are nine. And they're listed there in the minutes. These are just applications for approval, doesn't mean we'll get the grant, but they are proven they can apply.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Probably a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On Item Two, it says, "From TEMA, $33,709.13 with 50% matching costs benefiting ACEMA." What is ACEMA?
It's a good question, too, because I've never heard any of our departments refer. Yeah.
Emergency Management.
I usually just say.
Who, who, who heads that up?
Bryce. Kidwell.
All right. So, all these are going to be going through that budget? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the motion? And these are just applications, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Section B, Anderson County EMS Station Concept Design, Mayor Frank requested 64,800 from Account Fund 171-911-10799 in funding to proceed with design development and construction documents for Anderson County EMS concept station design.
We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess for me, I would like, and I understand this, this is just on the concept and the design phase, but from District One, I've been asked over and over about having an EMS station in District One, and I think the closest we get is Saw Clinton, it sounds like a lot. Clinton, it sounds like a lot. I guess my question is, with this design, are we looking at ever putting one in Claxton? And I've heard different things, I've heard that, you know, there's not enough traffic in Claxton or whatever, but that one fire study that came out showed the hotspot was Claxton. But, so I guess Mayor Nathan, I would like to know, before I vote on this expenditure, what is the thought process to considering a station in Claxton in the near future?
Share what I shared at Budget Committee about this particular part of the project. This has nothing to do with a location, so this would be your prototype, one design that could go in any community. So the Board of Commissioners will make a decision, you know, we can come with our own recommendations, but it could be up to County Commission where they want to put something. Absolutely. What is the timing? What's the priority for Commission? Where are the votes? Those, again, are decisions that Commission makes. The next step for Claxton, let me, let me fast forward. We absolutely need a station at some point. The first step, we right away need something that is a place for them to house or to stop, but right now, we're not funded at a 24/7. So unless something changed very quickly, I would not see Claxton being the first station to be built unless Commission says, okay, let's go ahead and go 24/7 for the Claxton community, because it would not make sense to build a full station with beds and all of that when you only have 12-hour employees. So that's step number one, would be moving to a 24-hour seven. But again, this is, this isn't location-specific, this is a template, a prototype that would only have to be tweaked based on the site plan for each community. So if you are in Rocky Top and you see a station, the goal is, it's going to look exactly the same in Rocky Top as it does in a Claxton, in a Clinton, and in an Oak Ridge, Andersonville, same kind of thing, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we bought this, like you said, we'd have to tweak for each site, but we don't have to pay any more licensing fees whether we build one or 15, right?
Correct. That's the point, is some cost savings with engineering and design. You know, also the thought is, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but part of the idea, too, is, say Commission chooses a location or their top two locations, you know, we did discuss with the architect, well, what if we went ahead and went out to bid on one, and then as an alternate said two, would we actually achieve any kind of savings in terms of, if you're doing two, maybe the contractor has one construction manager, they're able to move concrete, you know, one day, and then to the next facility the next day? So are there some cost savings that we could achieve even on the construction side by using the same design plan? So.
Commissioner Yeager, you're recognized.
Actually, I haven't spoken to Nathan about this, but my, my thought is it, the standardization of the stations is similar to the standardization of the ambulances. You can show up at any, you know, an employee can show up at any location and know exactly where everything is.
Yes.
And that, I think that is, makes a lot of sense. It's like the Southwest Airlines concept of buying off 737s. Everyone, every employee knows exactly where everything is at all times, and saves, saves time, saves lives, possibly.
Yep.
Do you fly Southwest?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second for the funding, this is out of the 171 Capital Fund, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All right, we'll go to the board and vote. We have 15 yes, one no. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Section C, Microsoft Office 365G3 with MFA, IT Director Brian Young presented a request for $78,000. At the time, I didn't realize it was for the fiscal year '26 budget, and it was, so this really was passed and approved to be in next year's budget, so.
No action needed tonight.
Didn't need any action from this committee tonight, no.
Okay.
And in Section D, the vacation payout policy, that was referred to the HR Advisory Committee before the next budget meeting to discuss, so we'll be bringing that back after that meeting, so no action on that one as well. And the '25, '26 proposed budgets, there was no action on those, it was just information.
All right.
Under Section F, new business, the Scarborough '85 project, Commissioner Palmer presented a request that the Finance Department ask the Nonprofit Committee provide a progress report on the project and time for inclusion on the May Budget Committee agenda, and that motion passed.
And there wouldn't be any action for this body, since it's coming back to budget?
Yes, that's fine. And under Section, in new business, item number two, the hotel motel tax, Mayor Frank presented an update and revenue projections on pending legislation regarding occupancy tax, and Commissioner Mays made a motion, and Shelley, Commissioner Vandergrift, to request that Mayor Frank work with the Law Director to prepare a resolution for the April 21, 2025 Commission Meeting repealing the county's existing 5% occupancy tax pursuant to TCA Code 6741401, leaving a new 4% occupancy tax in the unincorporated areas of the county, and a county occupancy tax applicable within all incorporated areas of the county, and that motion passed.
All right, so Commissioner Allen, motion to approve, sir. And then Commissioner Vow, second. Is there any discussion?
Resolution.
The resolution? Yes, sir.
I sort of say, I think that's on your report.
So let me ask you this, Mr. Brooks. I know that the state law now allows us, on this situation, to repeal the Private Act by resolution. Does this resolution passing need to have two-thirds vote, similar to a Private Act? I spent way too much time this weekend looking for that, and I couldn't find.
You spent way too little time looking.
Our rules, I believe, say that if anything, if we repeal something.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go. You were probably going to say it a lot more articulate.
If it was, the Private Act was enacted by two-thirds majority.
I just feel like it's safe.
I thought by tourism that it was fair change in state law, was a simple majority.
That's.
So through resolution.
Okay.
Like adopting this, this was a law passed at the state level that allowed.
Okay, yeah.
Counties to do this adjustment by resolution. Yeah.
And it, right, because it does not say anywhere in the statute, it's got to be two-thirds.
Okay.
Just how you would pass a resolution.
Very well. That's where we'll land. Commissioner Verran, you're recognized.
Yes, does this affect any of the city occupancy taxes?
Yes. So it will be, so I did misspeak at Budget Committee, I had old information, I did not realize Norris had put a tax in place, because I, I mentioned they may want to do that. Wow, missing the, no, I'm looking for, I have the city breakdown. I don't think it's in that. Is Stephanie here? No, Stephanie. So this will lower the tax, so currently, Anderson County's occupancy tax is 5% in the areas where we have stacked, and so it will lower that to 4%, and then it will place the same on all the municipalities. So yes, they will all be at 4%. Oak Ridge, Clinton, unincorporated Anderson County will be, will go to 4%, Rocky Top, 4%, Norris will be lowering theirs to 4%, Oliver Springs will be lowering to 4%. Did I answer correctly?
Commissioner Foster.
So the 4% is what the county charges, but if the city's charging 5%, it's stacked on top of that, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
This doesn't impact what they're.
They don't, right. So Oak Ridge, I don't know, they have one separately, this would be on top of that. It's catching places we haven't been charging.
Yes.
Okay, just need clarification. Thanks.
All right, so we've got the motion by Commissioner Allen, and seconded by Commissioner Vow. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're going to go from 5% to 4%, sounds like we're going to catch these places we're missing or something.
Yes, sir.
And on the current 5%, are we required to share any with the other municipalities?
We're not required to, no. I mean, there are some things we do, so for instance, you know, and this would be, again, more a Stephanie question, but for instance, with Placer AI, is that how you pronounce it? Like, we partner with the City of Oak Ridge, and we pay $14,000 towards that programming to be able to track visitors to city, county. So there are things that we do. If we equalize this and make it the same for all, I think it will create resources more for all, so.
So this is a recommendation from tourism?
It's not something that we've been able to look at because of the time constraint. So, but it is something that we've discussed in.
And Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of, I know that a lot of counties in the state of Tennessee are doing this just so they can have, control the narrative, because after a certain deadline.
Yes.
The state of Tennessee says this is it.
After, yes, after May 1st. So Rome County passed the resolution for 4% at their meeting last week, so this will put them, put us in line with them, too. So we can always go and lower.
Right.
But once May 1st passes, then we cannot.
But this gives us the ability to.
Correct, yes, yes.
All right. Commissioner Verran.
I just want to get clarification. Now, the city already has its own occupancy tax.
Yes, sir.
Are they currently being taxed on top of that for the county?
No, only, so, that's what we're saying, this would make it equal across all municipalities. So currently, we are, we're not taxing there. We have a stacked tax on there.
You, 5% in Oak Ridge would turn into 9%, so to speak?
Correct, yes.
For some, for some areas, they are stacked. So Oliver Springs currently is at 10%, and Clinton is currently at 8%. So they are stacked in some areas.
But not Oak Ridge?
No.
Well, I'm going to have to vote against it then.
All right. Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did we get something currently, if I'm wrong, estimate of about how much this change, revenue this would bring into the county if we implemented this change?
So just based on, so these are the prior year numbers, this would go from 690-some-thousand, and I'm looking at the state numbers, at our current 5%. By lowering and making it equal across all jurisdictions, it would bring in approximately 1.1 million. So that number could be higher. So currently, we have, I know, Mr. Brooks, so I reached out, Dr. Smallridge had asked me a question about this, and I reached out to the Tennessee Department of Tourism, and Josh Gibson, who's the numbers guy there, his numbers were projected a lot more, like 1.4 million, but the way he's looking at it right now, we're only collecting about 75% or so, but some of that is going to be, we've got one particular case where we're trying to collect, Mr. Brooks has been doing a great job in the legal work there, trying to get those funds in. But you look at, you know, limited infrastructure dollars and what we have, you know, for instance, you are able to use this on parks, parks can be tourism, and, or you need signage in a community, you need something for the ATVs, this is a good source. I look back on when we were trying to save the rail and do the tourism passenger rail. If we would have been in a position at that point in time to have some extra funds, and we had one particular individual really looking at this, he, if he would have even been able to borrow a million in order to do that, we could have made a bigger difference in that. So I think this, you know, these are not citizens that live here, so right now, when we look at a park project, unless we're winning a grant, we're having to tap into the property tax and the sales tax from the people that live here. So this is a way that visitors to our communities can help us build, you know, amenities for our community, for the people that live here, but also attract more visitors, so.
Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, just clarification, just ease everybody's concerns, we're not taking anything away from the cities by doing this.
No, sir. Well, in fact, we're lowering it for some, so if they want to go in and increase, they can.
Yep.
So they can get more revenue out for themselves, for their own city coffers.
Win-win for.
Yes.
Cities and the county.
Yes.
And I would just, before I go to Commissioner Allen, just for my friends past Elzagate, for like these rowing competitions, and the fear would be, oh, they're going to go to West Knoxville, as it say in their hotels. Well, they're not, because it would be an actual, it's pretty even, that what they charge in Farragut, West Knoxville, downtown Knoxville is eight, nine percent on top of that. So I think this kind of puts us in line, and it doesn't hurt our home citizens.
Correct.
Unless, like you said, they get in the doghouse and have to go stay at the Hampton Inn one weekend, so. Commissioner Allen, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, sir. I think people are always saying that when it comes to the city of Oak Ridge, and it's being stacked on top, who will be paying that tax? Will the citizens that live in Oak Ridge pay that tax, or will it be our tourists that come to our city, and that revenue can be used to improve our city? So who will be paying that tax?
Well, I mean, I'm sure there are the occasions where it may be someone locally staying, you know, they do a home repair or something, but the majority of this will be visitors, the sheer majority, overwhelming majority.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Verran, you're recognized again.
Well, my, my objection is that, okay, of course, this is coming from the tourists and everything like that, but that is also less money for them to spend in our community, too. So, you know, that, that's my whole thing about it. I think that makes a difference.
Yes, sir. All right. I think that puts a nice bow on it. We have a motion to approve the resolution. And a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. And no action was taken on the last item, the allocation of revenues. It was discussed in Section E, so that's all I have on the Budget Committee agenda. For the Finance Committee agenda, the Animal Shelter Update Resolution, Mayor Frank provided an update on the status of the Animal Shelter Project and the USDA loan process, and presented a resolution for a bond issuance in the amount of 5.9 million for construction costs for committee approval, and that did pass Resolution Number 25041211, which is in, right after the minutes of the Finance Committee.
All right. Is there, there we go. We have a motion by Commissioner Bochamp, a second by Commissioner McCamey. Is there any discussion on this motion?
The motion is to approve the resolution for a bond issuance in the amount of, the initial resolution, is that correct, Scott?
This is the bond.
The bond resolution for 5.9 million.
Talking about the school, oh, we're talking.
Animal shelter.
And this is going to market, I mean, what, can you elaborate on that?
I'm sorry.
Will you elaborate on this? Will you elaborate on this?
On numbers. It's a USDA loan, so we'll go to, actually Scott's here for that reason, so I would let him, you wanna discuss this?
So, the county's been moving through the USDA loan process, it takes a while, we've been waiting on the final designs and stuff, and that is being reviewed by USDA as we speak. So the next step, one of the next steps in the process is to adopt the bond resolution, which is what you're voting on tonight. We have already adopted the initial resolution and done the 20-day period, we did that last year. So this bond resolution approves basically two things. One, it approves doing interim financing under the USDA rules, you go, the county would actually go out, we'll have to get a short-term loan from one of the local banks, up to 5.9 million, and use that to build the facility, so basically a construction loan. At the end of the construction loan, USDA will pay that construction loan off, and, up to 5.9 million. That rate would be 3.625%. It's already locked in. It could go lower if rates are lower at the time we paid the interim financing off. Right now, that is not the case, but we would be at 3.625. It is a 40-year loan with monthly payments, and the, and those are outlined in the resolution, and the annual payment is right at 280,000 bucks is what it amounts to. So, that is what you are approving tonight as we continue to move forward with the animal shelter.
All right.
One last point.
Yes, sir.
The USDA loan is prepayable at any time, so, once we, we continue to move forward, get the animal shelter built, take, put this loan in place, to the extent that any funds are raised, or the county commission wants to make an extra payment or whatever, you can apply that to the principal, just like you would like a home mortgage, and send an extra check in, or pay extra every month if you wanted to, an extra thousand bucks, whatever, and it's all applied to the loan from the backside, and so the 40-year loan will become shorter and shorter if you make prepayments, just save interest over time, or, like I said, if you have a fundraiser and someone, if the animal shelter raises a million bucks, you can apply that to the loan and pay it down by a million bucks if that, which is one reason we pursued this option. One, the longer time period, the 3.625 rate, and the ability to prepay all or a portion anytime you want.
Commissioner Wondell, I saw your name, but it disappeared.
I thought I listened to discussion for a little bit.
Got you. Commissioner Foster, you're recognized.
On the construction loan, well, we know what the rate is, or is that at current market?
We would do an RFP to the local banks and get some proposals in, we're not to that step yet, but we would, I've done a couple of these here recently, though you have been in the 4, 4.25 range. We can do a drawdown loan, or we can take all the proceeds of closing, just depends on what we get. I think the construction is fairly short on this compared to like the school project, so, maybe a year or something like that, I think is what they were looking at, is that the initial construction? So, we would only be in the construction period for about a year, then we would pay it off, so. And the interest on that, we can actually roll into the loan potentially, so you would not potentially even have to make any interest payments until the permanent financing's in place.
Is it, Robbie, is it you, is it the finance committee that will make that RFP determination?
We will have a, I will help the county, as I've done in the past, and put a RFP together and send out, I have about 20 banks or more that we can send it to and get a proposal back and get the lowest rate.
Okay. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for explaining, Scott. So, it sounds like we're gonna go out, if this passes, you're, in the near future, you'll go out to a local bank and put that RFP out and get those funds.
We are still waiting for final approvals from USDA on the actual design of the building and some other steps, but if that comes, if the USDA signs off on the final, or whatever tweaks are needed to be made, and we get a bid package ready, get it all together, we will, once that bid package comes back, then we will be simultaneously getting financing to implement the bid and get the construction started. So, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take to get the USDA approval, but hopefully, we're getting a lot closer. So, probably, you are probably correct, in the next couple of months, hopefully, we'll be moving forward.
I understand, based on discussions in the finance committee, this is just a request, but it sounds like it's a little more than a request to me now. I voted no in the finance committee. I'm not gonna challenge my fellow commissioners and try to convince them to change their votes or anything, but for me, I'm not gonna support moving forward for debt when we don't have a clear understanding of how the facility will be operated, how it'll be paid for, maintained, all of those things, it's kinda scare me to death. It's kinda, it's kind of a known factor building the school, you know, how many kids you got and what your costs are, what your infrastructure's gonna be. It sounds great to build a new school to fix everything, but as we all know, just 'cause you build something new doesn't fix everything. And with the upcoming workshops, which we'll be talking about later, I think, for me, putting the cart before the horse to say, let's finance a new one, when we don't even know what we're gonna do going into the future of who's gonna operate it. We, and I know we'll all figure that out in the next couple of meetings, and I'm looking forward to that, but I'm gonna wait until I understand what the future direction is for the animal shelter and animal control in Anderson County, and that's what I'm gonna do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Is there any other, so, Scott, when you say local, will you define local?
I will submit a list to the county mayor for her to approve, but it will be, we'll find all the banks in Anderson County, we'll make sure all the banks on the local list, and then I have the regional type banks, the Regions of the world, and Truist, and the ones you see with the major branches, and then I got a couple out-of-state banks that may be interested too, but we'll see.
And this is not something that Cumberland Securities, Bond Fund, or any of these guys will be participating in?
Well, I'm with Cumberland Securities as your financial advisor, but we do not bid or, you know, we're not involved in actually making the loan, I'm helping you facilitate it, but, and then...
But is there any connection on the back end with any of these banks that you guys will?
I do not collect any fees or anything from any banks, ever.
That's not what I'm asking you.
Okay.
What I'm asking you is, is, is there any bank that we potentially could award money to, well, give money to, that Cumberland Securities will receive a fee for on this project?
From the bank or from you?
From the bank.
I do not receive any fees from any third parties.
From us?
If I, if we continue to move forward, I will, there will be a fee for me as we get this financing in place and the permanent financing, so yes. Just like the Bassbarian Sims, who drafted the resolution's gonna get paid, and we potentially could have a small fee from whatever bank.
So there's no chance that Cumberland Securities gets a check from anybody in all of this?
Anderson County, through the bond issue, would ultimately pay me, but there's no outside party paying me, ever.
Okay.
I, as you know, well, I will state, I'm your municipal advisor, and under the federal laws outstanding, I have a fiduciary duty to Anderson County, and so I have to do what's in your best interest under federal law.
No, I, no, I...
Which I always do.
Yeah.
But, and, but as part of that, I don't collect any third-party fees, or if I do collect them, I have to disclose them, and our firm never discloses them.
I just, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay.
You know, I just, for the record, I just never feel comfortable in these situations, to be very frank.
With Cumberland Securities or just doing all this?
Just when any, any, any potential vendor of any project in this county, it would be like Mayor Construction being the Anderson County Construction Advisor, and then we just awarded them a $27 million school.
Except, I do not, I'm not involved on buying or selling or making any of the loans, I am...
No, I know.
I am the quarterback to make sure it all happens correctly and make sure you comply with all the federal and state laws, so.
Good for me. All right, Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would this delay the USDA process any if, if this doesn't pass tonight? It was my understanding from the finance committee that we would go to the bottom of the pile in that process with the USDA loan.
We would, I mean, we could come back next month if you wanted to, I don't, I think that's, the USDA projects probably still, the state, or the USDA architect and their team are still probably gonna be reviewing this for the next 30 days, but at some point, we need to have their approval so that they, we can continue to move forward.
Okay. This is the needed, the needed next step?
This is one of the needed next steps.
Okay.
But even if you approve this tonight, I mean, USDA has to sign off, it still has to come back, and, I mean, the county mayor can tell me to delay moving forward until she is happy with, she slash this commissioner, happy that everything's in place and y'all are ready to start the building project. Just because you pass this doesn't mean we're actually building.
Right.
I mean, it puts us in place to finance the building, but it doesn't give us the go-ahead to actually start the building.
Thank you.
Is that a fair statement, Mayor?
Yes, and, well, we, we... I mean, I know you're referencing a couple of RFPs, but one of those RFPs would be, we have to go to RFP for the actual construction, to determine the cost, and then it was Kirk Morris with USDA who actually said that they, that we should go ahead and pass this, so.
That's what I thought I understood.
He didn't want, he didn't want this commission or this resolution to be the holdup. That doesn't mean that we're not gonna have more holdups, but this will be one check on the list, but this does not give us permission to move forward with the construction. It only gives us permission to do the financing, once the construction is approved, to move forward. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
They have to approve us moving to actual bid on the construction, so we have to, we have to get their approval on even that part of it.
Okay.
Commissioner Foster.
And no money will be borrowed until we go to construction? If we decided, hey, we're scrapping all this, we don't owe you any money, we don't, you know, right, no money's borrowed until we go to bid construction, until we start building? Is that when we actually take some money, correct?
That, I would not get paid until we do an actual financing, that is correct.
Thanks.
I want to clarify, though, you will be paying me this year, not necessarily on this project, but we are moving forward with the Claxton Elementary School, and I'm doing that on your behalf also, so.
Borrowing money, I just wanna make sure, you know, Commissioner Wondell, that's the part of the agenda, we're not borrowing, we're just moving the process forward, but any point we go, we're done, let's back out, and we're not, we don't owe anything.
Correct.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Bochamp and second by Commissioner McCamey to approve this resolution. All right. If you're calling for one, we'll do one. All right, we've got a request for a board vote in the back. So no other discussion, we will go ahead and go to the board and vote. Oh, it's me. Motion carries.
Thank you. The only other action in the finance committee meeting was, the committee passed a motion to approve a new P-card, RFP for US Bank instead of Truist, and that motion was made by Commissioner Wondell and seconded by Commissioner Isabel to approve moving forward with the US Bank program.
All right, do you need action from this body?
No, I think once the finance committee makes that decision.
Yeah, okay.
And we really didn't even need action from the finance committee, we just, we just had action.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Robbie.
We have got the schools, did Marcus slip out? Looks like he is not present, but if you have questions for Dr. Parrott or Mr. Bullock, we know where to find them. And then, next, we will move on to the law director.
We have a report in front of you, busy month of contracts, 36 plus maybe some more that we don't have on there yet. Same thing with zoning, they've sort of exploded last month. You can see that, I think, under newly filed number three, that's been taken care of, so it's off the whiz. Over to page three, under motion for default judgment, number one, it will be combined with the motion for trial date, that's all the same owners. Leans and pending quotes, we've basically done all we can in this office for those, until we're instructed to execute levy and sale on the land that's under the lien section. Nothing really to add to the litigation updates. That's it. Any questions?
All right. Mr. Brooks, yes, Commissioner Wondell.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I could've sworn the finance committee meeting, Dr. Parrott wanted to be sure we passed the funding for the school, has that already been done, Mayor? I, I may have misunderstood him, I just wanna be sure we're not missing it, 'cause...
I don't think, I don't believe that we had any action items for, so the one thing he was waiting on was, I guess, the final contract for the, for Claxton School?
I know the school board just recently took up the action, and it was in the minutes, so it may be coming to the May budget, maybe?
Okay, okay. And I know he was waiting on one final, something final with the contract, and then, once that happens, then they would be able to begin work, so. I don't think there was anything remaining left on finance, other than he was just reporting in, we had it on the agenda for him to report in on what the status was.
So, we have financing in place for the school, we don't have to do any action?
Yeah, 'cause I think he, the first several million will be coming out of the school account.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir. All right, operations committee chairman, Isabel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the mayor's report, Mr. Jaeger made a motion to authorize the request to build a small gate or a cable at the parking lot entrance of the soccer fields. Seconded by Commissioner McCamey, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Anderson County Animal Shelter and Animal Control Update, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to set the date for a workshop with the mayor and chairman, May's to May 5th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. in room 312, with details to follow. Seconded by Commissioner McCamey, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I sent that unofficially proposed agenda in the email today, I will send a more official document, and if that's okay with you guys, the direction with it being, you know, obviously, public comment at every workshop, but then engaging stakeholders that are involved in the shelter from all different capacities for that first meeting, so we can hear from everybody. So, if that's okay with you guys, then I'll send out something more special for the 5th at 5:00. All right, so we've got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under New River Water Lines, Commissioner Wondell made a motion for a resolution and supported pursuing the $8.6 million coming to the state of Tennessee and send it to officials, TDEC, and Fordville Lieutenant Governor, Congressman Fleishman, and Representatives. Seconded by Commissioner Capshaw, motion passed unanimously forward to full commission for approval. And Mr. Chairman, I think New River Gal, Commissioner Bochamp may have a statement on this.
Yes, I had spoke to Congressman Fleishman Thursday of last week. If it's in the budget and enough time, this Thursday, we will be having a dinner with him, and he has graciously said that he will sit down, he's gonna get the numbers, and Jimmy Dean just sent them to me through email, I'm gonna give them to Congressman Fleishman, and he's gonna look for funds that might be available now to help out with that project, or maybe possibly earmarking some funds for that. So, we have his support, we have him on board, I've just gotta get him all the specs and everything this Thursday and talk to him about it, and he knows how much the New River area means to me, so he's more than willing to try to help us out with that.
Good deal. All right, so we got a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. And the motion, I think, needs to say, should they have to go to Dean's for their dinner?
No, they'll be, it's off house.
All right. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second part of that, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to have a resolution for the wind grant for underserved and disadvantaged communities seeking from the state to provide fresh water. Seconded by Commissioner Capshaw, motion passed unanimously to forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under new business, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to have a letter or a resolution written in support of keeping Claxton Park in place until we have a new location earmarked to replace it and respectfully request EPA and current administration to remove any policies and procedures to allow this to happen. Seconded by Commissioner Baron, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Is there any discussion on this motion? Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I do want to just note that we have a, so there's a couple of different things on this. We have, the county has a First Amendment to the Grant of Term Recreational Easement. And so that has already been executed by Anderson County. There are two different things here. There's the TCA that requires the park to be managed by the Conservation Board. So if you go back and you look at the history, when the county entered into the agreement for the land, and I think that was, we paid like eleven thousand dollars or something like that. The county could not accept the park until they filed paperwork and permission with TDEC through the Conservation Board. The Conservation Board actually initiated this discussion and Commissioner Anderson can probably speak to some of this because he was on there, I think, in twenty twenty-three when the board and Ben were looking at the end of life for that particular park. And so at that time, I think, I think they extended an invitation to the commissioners from that district as they were embarking upon those conversations. So the park, for unrelated reasons, the park board or the Conservation Board terminated, expressed their desire for closure instead of putting funds into rehabbing the facility. And so I think there's maybe some conversation that should be had. I mean, we have an agreement that we executed on behalf of the county with TVA that is unrelated to what the Conservation Board is doing. But I don't have all of that information at my fingertips. I do, I have some. But I just wanted to.
When did the Conservation Board? I guess, what is it, like, they just sunset it to, to end on a certain day?
Yeah, I think that the sunset was December of that year, I believe. And that was, I think TVA is committed to some funds for the new spot, but I guess the main thing is we're trying, we'd like, Commissioner Wondell would like to have a commitment of an actual location. So I know we, Conservation Board was, was open to a lot of things with that. But I guess until maybe the school system decides what they're doing with the, the old school property or TVA provides another area, we still don't know exactly where we're going. But we, we never had the intention of just completely doing away with the park. We just wanted to, since the bull run was going to be, there's going to be construction and deconstruction going on there. We, we knew that, and the, the wooden park structure is kind of out of code and kind of at the end of its life. So we knew we needed to, we needed to do something, but we thought we'd be better off for the community to go somewhere else. So that's kind of why we wanted to get out of that lease.
There is, so just on behalf of TVA's commitment, I know that they did throw a number out there of two hundred and fifty thousand. What they discussed was like, so they're not going to, you know, purchase a, a bunch of land or anything, but they're talking about kind of a like structure for like structure was some of the terminology that was used. And I know type one energy is moving in there, and I don't want to be at odds with Commissioner Wondell. I just, I'm saying there's kind of a couple of different things here. There's the Conservation Board's desire, which doesn't have anything to do with the EPA. And then there's the coal ash and the TVA structure. And we haven't executed agreement. So I don't, I guess I'm just saying, maybe could we pause this res, I mean, because we're going to be passing a resolution that is at odds with an agreement that we have already signed and is already filed with the Register of Deeds. And that commitment involved TVA taking full responsibility of all the demolition, you know, any cleanup disposal. And that is a cost that the Conservation Board and parks does not have to take on. That was part of that agreement.
All right. Commissioner Palmer, then I'll go with Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think it's the conservation, from what I understand, the Conservation Board did not want to do this because of, of the EPA problems or whatever. It had to do with the end of the life of that wooden structure, wanting the cost of maintenance, you know, safety issues, that sort of thing. That's the, you know, part of the reason why they wanted to decommission it. But also, we want to be good partners with TVA. So I think what I'd like to do is make a, amend the motion maybe to defer this for thirty days or so to let Mayor, maybe get some more information and let's get some more information from the Conservation Board. I mean, is that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to pull their minutes and what their thinking was. I don't know. So I mean, I guess procedurally, what we're looking at.
Hold on one second, Mayor.
Okay.
So you have a motion for deferral?
I want to, I motion.
If I could just take that up first. We have a motion for deferral. Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a second for deferral. And the only debatable issue in this is the length of time that you're asking to defer it to.
Hmm, how about thirty days, next meeting?
Next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion to defer to the next meeting. Is there any discussion on this motion for deferral in terms of the length of time? Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, are we deferring it to Operations Committee or just straightforward?
Full commission. Full commission, madam.
Probably, probably should go back maybe to operations for more discussion. Yeah, get all the information. The mayor will be there, can bring research the minutes.
Are you okay with that? Okay.
Except for every thirty days.
No, it won't be. So the motion to defer to the May operations meeting.
Yeah, okay, yeah. That'll be less than thirty days.
Commissioner Wondell, is your, do you want to discuss the timeframe on that, or is it something different?
Well, I mean, a lot of things have been said. I think it, I should have a right to kind of speak towards them, but I agree with, okay.
I'm good with, with that, but I, on the motion to defer, we've got to take it up first.
Okay.
Is there any discussion on the motion to defer? Huh? Board vote? All right, we've been asked for a board vote on the motion to defer to May's Operations Committee meeting. Go ahead and go to the board. Fourteen yes to no, motion carries. Commissioner Wondell, we'll give you a little time to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the need to defer it, but, you know, I think the county took it over in two thousand and three, maybe, two thousand and five. Please remember, commissioners, this, this park was not built with any taxpayer dollars. This was money raised, eighty thousand, ninety thousand dollars to build the park. The citizens built it themselves. The two, the two pavilions there were built by the peoples and representative of their families. When you drive by there, the only thing we have in Claxton is that park. We can say that it's because of the, the woods deteriorating and, you know, we need to get it out of there, or we can say it costs too much money to maintain it. But the reality is, it's a park our community uses. And if we do not fight for that park, we will certainly lose it. And if, if, if the mindset of the commission is it costs too much to continue to maintain, then I would respectfully request that you end the agreement with TVA and TVA reissue it back to Claxton Optimist Club the way it was before. And we will go to our community again and raise the funds. The only cost there is, by the way, is to cut the grass, put out ADA compliance mulch every two years, and it's about ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars. But that's a requirement by the federal government for ADA compliant playgrounds. You have to have that type of mulch. So I've been on the Conservation Board before, so, you know, we got a president that I, I see doing great things. And he tore down the EPA guidelines, and that's where this really originated. You know, everybody can say different things. But the EPA regulation from the Biden administration was to shut down all these coal ash. And, and what really amazes me, we, we kind of glance over the fact that we've done studies by TDEC, and TDEC said it was safe. In fact, if you look at our website, you'll see it on the first page. But we're going to shut it down because all of a sudden the, it's unsafe or something, which I, I don't buy for a second. But I continue to drive by there, and I continue to see families having birthday parties and playing, and it's the only thing out there. And what really bothers me is how we can sit here and say, well, TVA says they're going to give us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, I haven't seen anything in writing. I haven't seen any check, and I certainly will not cash that check until I see some, one in black and white. So, you know, I, I think it's incumbent for me as a commissioner in that district to fight for what we have to have, and that's a playground for our community. And, and that's what I intend to do. So, you know, I, I, I'd like to see this letter still go through. If we have to wait a month, then that's fine. State Representative Rick Scarborough has already wrote a letter to Congressman Fleishman, and I'm hopeful that Congressman Fleishman is meeting with the, the right people at EPA to tell them to back off because the only coal ash in that particular location is bottom ash, which is the safest ash of all. And it's at the bottom capped off with layers and layers of clay. All that other stuff was fugitive dust, you know, and it blows. It's kind of hard to keep it out of there. So I quit rambling, but I'd appreciate my commissioners if you help us fight to keep a park there until we have a designated location in the know and how it's going to be funded. And I think we owe it to the people in that community that helped build it, helped pay for it, and, and actually helped maintain it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Palmer, quickly.
Quickly. So last year at the daddy-daughter dance, there was a little girl that had a big stitches and such right here. And I engaged in conversation with the dad. She fell on that kids' palace structure on a nail, had to go to the emergency room, have this stitched up. That turned, that was turned into a clang, and that was handled last year. So yes, there are safety issues with the kids' palace because of the type of structure it is. I assure you that the Conservation Board is not going to stop trying to find a place to relocate. It's just, this, this structure is end of life. And so I very much want Claxton community to have that play structure or whatever they would like to have. The Conservation Board is working on that, maybe even considering surveying the community. So there, we are working on it.
All right, Commissioner Isbell.
I, I just want to say that I support Commissioner Wondell in the statements also that Commissioner Palmer made. Claxton does need to keep the playground, and it needs to be safe. So that's, I'll go on.
All right. All right, so now, was it conclude your?
No.
Okay.
We got ACWA minutes. Commissioner Wondell made a motion that we obtain ACWA meeting agendas before they have their meetings to distribute to all commissioners. Seconded by Commissioner McCamey, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Capshaw. We got a second by Commissioner Val. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The last thing on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, was the discussion about the highway truck traffic we're still having on one sixteen. We had tremendous support from this body, from the county mayor, from the sheriff's department, from the state legislators. But we have an issue. Commissioner Val and myself both have been contacted by the people who live on one sixteen, and it's continuing to be an unsafe environment. And what the feedback we're getting and some people sending on social media that their trucks are still traveling on that road, and there's not been any enforcement. And that's the conversations that Commissioner Val and myself have been. So I don't know what direction we could take if Mayor would reach out to the Highway Patrol Captain and just have some discussion on that because, you know, these people still getting videos and, and they've kind of got fed up with it and just quit posting them. You know, everybody, you know, we know how our constituents are. You know, they look to us, and we do our best. And this committee has, but we still need to go a little further.
Sir.
I have some information on that. I don't know if I can speak, but I do have some information that's from the Hill.
You want to get with the mayor on, would you be willing to get with Jimmy?
Yes, sir.
Let's see if THP.
Okay. So in other words, our constituents, the mayor's going to get and talk with Jimmy Burge and going to get with the Highway Patrol. Okay. Then that concludes the Operations Committee Agenda Report.
Dr. Smallridge.
We don't have any excellent items to bring to the county commission tonight. We had a good discussion in our last meeting. And, you know, we, the Law Director will be bringing us some recommendations in the future for changes in a couple of rules.
Commissioner Wondell, Fire Commission Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the Fire Commission Report, we have the minutes, as I said earlier, from the March fourth. But basically, the only discussion we had, we had many, but the primary discussion, again, and Robbie mentioned something about the overall project look, I guess, but we'd like, Fire Commission has respectfully requested seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars to have the Budget Committee consider to reappropriate the current tax dollars to help fund the fire departments across the county. That's their desire. That's the number they come up with. We recognize them. We don't have a fire truck resolution any longer. So they're hopeful that the Budget Committee will take that up and take a look at reappropriating the, the remaining tax dollars that are set aside after each year and now set aside in a different code altogether. But if we could take a small percentage of that and on that property tax, when you get it, it would now say fire safety as a line item, along with schools and sheriffs and, you know, and all the other parts. So that's the only thing we discussed in the Fire Commission. I'll, I'll just share that as information. It's not a motion. That concludes the report there. If you'd like for me to move on to?
Yes, whenever you're ready, sir.
I'll go to the veterans. We had a meeting on, I don't have that. Let me slide on down to it, I guess. It'd be the easiest thing to do. Well, we had a meeting, I know, this month. I don't have it in front of me. It's on the consent agenda, and I didn't pull it over. Hey, wait a minute. I got it right here. We had a meeting on April four, April seventh, and we had everybody present. We talked about several things. But the primary things I wanted to bring, you can read the, the agendas yourself, but primary things I wanted to talk about are some highlights from January to March twenty twenty-five. Scott Nation, our VSO, had two hundred and sixty-three office appointments, attended three lunche, luncheon learns with TDVS, the Tennessee Department of Veteran Services, attended three Anderson County Veterans breakfasts and had one DAV breakfast, attended meetings with ASAP of Anderson County. I really appreciate that. Assisted the veterans of Anderson County receiving, again, I want to emphasize, assisted the veterans of Anderson County in receiving over two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars in retroactive payments fiscal year to date. It's eight hundred ninety-three thousand, four dollars and thirty-four cents. Again, that's from January to March twenty-five. Two home visits, three nursing home visits, one school program about veterans. And the final thing, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is Veterans Court Mentorship Program Training. And the final thing, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is Veterans Court Mentorship Program Training in Cleveland. Veterans without violent crimes can be allowed to participate with our VSO and a few others in being mentors. So, I just want to bring that to your attention. I appreciate what Veteran Service Officer Nation's doing for our veterans. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor? Is there a new board member?
Yes. Do you have it in front?
No, I don't.
Hang on, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me... That, that consent agenda's got me, I moved it over, but I'm not on it.
Scott, you have the name?
Ms. Hadley, I think. Yes.
Motion to add the said subject to the Veterans Committee. We had an opening.
And that was on your, in your minutes, is that right?
It's on, it's in the minutes of the consent agenda, yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the, the minutes, including...
What's her name?
Hadley, Hadley.
Hadley, yeah, very, very active, she's good.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, new business, Commissioner Palmer.
Since this appointment, where we have a vacancy on the Rules Committee, and we need to appoint a Commissioner to the Rules Committee, and since this appointment did not go through the nominating committee, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the commission rules for this one appointment and then resume the commission rules after the vote.
All right, so, I had sent that out in an email, but I don't know if there's anybody interested.
After we, after we suspend the rules, we'll see.
There wasn't many takers. Got a motion by Commissioner Capshaw, seconded by Commissioner Palmer to accept any nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Jaeger, you're recognized.
I'd like to nominate Saber?
Bochamp for the Rules Committee.
The bigger question is, do you accept?
I accept.
Okay, so we have a nom, we have a nomination for Saber Bochamp. Is there any other nominations?
What's wrong with you?
I know where Robert's about to go.
Motion, nomination ceased, and she'd be elected by acclamation.
All right. All right, we got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Saber Bochamp. All right. That concludes everything until announcements. I will say this really quick, Commissioners, if you will comply for just a second. Ms. Clinton, Tina is here. We failed, and I'm, I'll take the heat for it, Tina. We failed to get, for part of her thing, we failed to get a picture with her in the full body. So, she has patiently sat through all of the government bureaucracy to get a picture. So, if you all, I understand. So, if there are no other announcement, are there any other announcements before Tina comes up and takes a picture and we... Next Saturday, is it? This Saturday? So, this might be what propels her. I don't know. So, any other announcements from the body? All right, seeing none, we, okay, Commissioner Palmer.
I was just going to announce that the antique, Spring Antique Festival downtown Clinton in two weekends, this weekend in May.
Awesome, Commissioner Capshaw.
I was just going to say, within the last, what, two weeks, we've had, lost two different people in Anderson County, in Oak Ridge. Former Commissioner Teresa Scott, who's very dear to me, and Rick Evans, or Coach Evans, as I called him, at Glenwood Elementary School, was a teacher for over 30 something years. They both passed away the same week, so...
Thank you.
Please give those family in your prayers.
Thank you. All right, seeing none, we will stand adjourned, and we will do our picture. Tina, however you want to do this.
No, thank you.